Hereby call to order the Roseville City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 20th, 2023. Mr. City Manager, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Eton.
Here.
Councilmember Schrader.
Here.
Councilmember Graff.
Here.
Councilmember Strawn.
Here.
Mayor Row.
Here. And with us this evening at our dais, we have our city attorney, Rachel Tierney, on my right at the end, and our city manager, Pat Trudgeon, on my left at the other end. We also have a number of staff, department heads, and guests who will be participating in the meeting as agenda items come forward. We would ask folks, if you have a cellphone, to make sure that you silence it or otherwise assure that it won't disrupt the meeting. If you do need a copy of the agenda or need to refer to any of the meeting materials, that's available on the table in the back, just under the clock there. We've got a full copy of all the meeting materials available for the public, as well as multiple copies of the agenda that you can refer to. And with that, we would ask folks to stand, if you're able, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda this evening is approval of tonight's agenda, and we always check first with staff to see if there are any changes that need to be made to the agenda this evening from a staff perspective.
Mr. Mayor, there's no changes by staff.
Okay. Then checking with the council, are there any changes that councilmembers would like to make to the agenda this evening, or items that councilmembers would like removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration? Doesn't appear to be the case. Then we'll check in with the members of the public who are here this evening, who may be here for an agenda item. We generally have public comment for each business item as it comes up, but if you go to the second page of our agenda, the back page, section 10, that's called the Consent Agenda, and there are items A through M under that section of the agenda, and those are usually taken up as a single motion with limited opportunity for input or discussion because they're usually fairly administrative and ministerial and non-controversial. But we do always want to check at the beginning of the meeting if somebody is here for an item in section 10. On that second page of the agenda, the Consent Agenda, if someone is here for one of those items to either comment or ask a question, this would be the time to let us know, and we can take that item up earlier in the meeting so that you don't have to wait till the very end if you have a question or comment. So we'll just double-check with folks here in the audience, is there anyone here for an item in section 10, items 10A through M of the agenda this evening? Does not appear to be the case. And once again, for other agenda items earlier in the meeting, we will provide that opportunity for public comment and go through that step in those portions of the meeting. With that, then, I believe we can approve the agenda as presented. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Strawn, to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
That passes unanimously. We have our agenda for this evening. Next on our agenda is the first opportunity for public comment this evening. This is for public comment not related to specific agenda items. We will have an opportunity for members of the public to speak to agenda items as those come up, but at the start of each meeting, by policy, we do provide an opportunity for general public comment, which may be on other issues related to city business, or information that may be helpful or relevant to people in the community, but once again, isn't something that's on our agenda to talk about this evening. So I'll check, is there anyone here for an item not on tonight's agenda that wanted to make a comment at this time in our meeting?
All right, one more opportunity. Is there anyone here for general public comment this Seeing none, then, we'll proceed with our agenda. Next on our agenda is under recognitions and donations. We've got a couple of proclamations, and the procedure with those will be that I'll read them, and then we'll take a motion to approve. The first proclamation this evening is related to the Americans with Disabilities Month and reads as follows. Whereas since 1990, the Americans with Disabilities Act has focused on ending discrimination against individuals with disabilities and on promoting full integration and participation in society, and whereas approximately 20% of Americans have a disability, as defined by the Americans with Disabilities Act, a number projected to increase as our society ages, and whereas, as a direct result of the passage of the Americans with Disabilities Act, an increased number of children and adults with disabilities are living, playing, and working and shopping alongside their neighbors, and whereas, Roseville is becoming inclusive and free of physical communication and social barriers, and whereas, state and local government services are continually improving and providing increasingly accessible services and programs to Minnesotans with disabilities, and whereas, state and local governments, including Roseville, are beginning to understand the importance and relevance of providing accessible digital information and electronic services to Minnesotans with disabilities, and whereas, on this 33rd anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, we celebrate and recognize the progress that has been made and acknowledge the challenges that still exist on our horizon, and we reaffirm our commitment to full equity and inclusion for all. Now therefore be it resolved, the city of Roseville hereby declares July 26, 2023, as the anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, and asks all in Roseville to acknowledge that. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Schrader, seconded by Councilmember Strawn, and I just note, in the agenda, it said Americans with Disabilities Month proclamation, and that's what threw me off as I was reading, and I was waiting for the part about the month, but it's a day, actually. So apologize for that apparent confusion there, but we've got the motion before us to approve the proclamation related to Americans with Disabilities Act recognition. Any discussion on that motion? Councilmember Strawn?
I just wanted to thank the staff for the efforts that have been put into place as we've had certain people raise concerns, and there've been quick resolution, but I hope that we can continue to have that type of more proactive, looking at things from all different angles throughout the city to make our areas and our, everything that our public touches, more accessible. Thanks.
If there's any other discussion, Councilmember Schrader?
I just wanted to mention that a number of our department heads have already included some of this in their presentations and when they're presenting to the council, realizing that that is part of something we need to get better at, but I appreciate that they've already started doing that before we even proclaimed this, so it's good work.
All right. Yes, we certainly want to, as it says in the proclamation, we want to acknowledge the improvements that have been made, but as well acknowledge the work that still needs to be done. With that, we've got the motion before us to approve that proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That passes unanimously. That proclamation is approved. The second proclamation is for a month, and it is to proclaim July 2023 as Parks and Recreation Month in Roseville, and it reads as follows. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an essential part of the Roseville community, and whereas parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in Roseville, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of Roseville and the larger community, and whereas our parks and recreation programs build healthy, equitable, and active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, promote social bonds by uniting neighbors, and also improve and ensure the physical, mental, and emotional health of all citizens, and whereas parks and recreation contribute to making Roseville an equitable community by offering diverse programs and services that are appealing and accessible to all in Roseville, educating community members about diverse cultures, and providing gathering spots where neighbors can gather, interact, and build bonds, and whereas our parks and recreation programs increase Roseville's economic prosperity through increased property values, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of residents and businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas Roseville recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now therefore be it resolved that the city of Roseville hereby declare July 2023 as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Roseville. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Eton, seconded by Councilmember Graff. Any discussion on that motion?
Yeah.
All right. We've got the motion before us to declare July as Parks and Recreation Month in Roseville. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That passes unanimously, and that proclamation is approved. That then brings us to our business items this evening. We've got several business items, starting with some public hearings. The first public hearing is related to an on-sale liquor license for TOs food and beverage in Roseville, and I believe Mr. Trudgeon will be introducing this item for our consideration. Mr. Trudgeon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As mentioned, in front of you tonight is a public hearing in consideration of issuing an on-sale liquor license with Sunday sales and outdoor endorsement for TOs food and beverage. As you recall, TOs just recently took over the food service and now a liquor service at the Cedar Home Community Building. They're up and running already. Currently, we do have a liquor license under the name of the city, so once this is approved, then they will be able to fully provide the services for liquor services as well. So they have submitted all the application. There was one little wrinkle in the fees, which will get sorted out, and so this is ready for approval, and we would ask for your approval. And I'm not sure if there's a representative in the audience tonight for TOs. I don't think so.
Doesn't appear to be. All right. Are there any questions from the council for staff on this license application this evening? Councilmember Graff?
I'm sure they have, but they've been aware of testing and how we handle that and the education they need for service.
Yes, thank you for that question. It's a very important question. Yes, we make sure we go over that. They are aware.
Thank you.
All right. This is a public hearing, so we'll open up the public hearing for members of the public to speak to this license application. Once again, this is an on-sale liquor license application for TOs, which is doing the food and beverage service at the Cedar Home Community Building in Roseville. And I just want to double-check the license itself. There is an outdoor endorsement as well. That's a requirement for outdoor sales and service for liquor licenses, so it's both for the on-sale liquor license and Sunday sales, as well as the outdoor endorsement. With that, once again, this is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to this license application in consideration this evening. We'll just quickly go over the rules for public comment, and then we don't have to hopefully repeat them for every opportunity, but basically, there's a three-minute time limit per speaker by council rule. I'll try to enforce that as generously and gently as I can. We ask that anyone who speaks begins their comments by stating their name and either their address or their street for the record. Address all comments and questions to the council, and then the council will refer any of those questions for answering once everybody's had a chance to speak. So once again, this is a public hearing on the proposed on-sale liquor license and outdoor endorsement for TOs operating at the Cedar Home Community Building. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this item at this time? All right, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll move to council consideration of the license. Is there a motion from the council?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Eton, to approve the liquor license as requested, including the outdoor endorsement. Discussion on the motion? Maker of the motion, Councilmember Graff?
Well, this is service that we've had before, and it's a new organization, so I think it makes sense to give them the opportunity to cover that business.
All right. As the second, or anything else?
Just excited this is up and running now, and look forward to successful with the business and how they work with our city.
All right. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. We've got the motion before us to approve the license as outlined. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That passes unanimously. That license is approved. Next on our agenda, then, is consideration of a on-sale liquor license for Par. 365 LLC, and once again, I'll turn it over to Mr. Trudgeon to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As was mentioned, this is a public hearing to consider approving a liquor license and Sunday sales for Par. 365 LLC, which is a new business to the community. It'll be opening up hopefully early this fall. They are located at 2655 Patton Road, and so they're looking for an on-sale liquor license and Sunday sales. As you may remember, this is a golf simulator business that would also have food and liquor. Mr. Jackson is here representing the ownership, if you have any particular questions, but we do recommend approval of this liquor license.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. Are there any questions from members of the council for staff on this? And we'll just double-check if you, as the applicant, wish to make any statement in support of your application, or you're good to just stand for questions. All right. Doesn't appear to be questions from the council. This is a public hearing on this proposed on-sale liquor license for Par. 365 LLC, so we'll open up the public hearing for anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this application and this request for license this evening. Once again, we just mentioned there is a three-minute time limit per speaker, and address comments or questions to the council. Is there anyone here to speak to this license application for Par. 365 this evening? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll move to council consideration. Is there a motion for this?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Schrader, seconded by Councilmember Eton. Discussion on the motion? Councilmember Schrader is the maker of the motion. Councilmember Eton is the second.
Hopefully this business gets underway and is successful, too.
All right. And I think we've got further business related to them this evening in that regard. All right. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the on-sale liquor license for Par. 365 LLC indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That passes unanimously. That license is approved. And as was mentioned, we have another business item related to Par. 365, which is their request for some sewer access charge credits, and I believe we've got our community development director, Janice Gunlock, here to introduce this item this evening. Welcome, Ms. Gunlock.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you heard, Par. 365 has applied for a building permit. They are requesting sewer access charge credits. Again, this business is located at 2655 Patton Road. They're finishing out approximately 5,000 square feet, which includes some indoor golf simulation stations. Their SAC determination from the Met Council resulted in them needing to pay for seven additional SAC. This included the two credits that were already on-site based on the previous office and warehouse space. Because each SAC is approximately $2,485, that equates to over $17,000 in SAC fees due to the Met Council to be paid before the building permit can be released. As noted in the council report, the city does maintain an account of SAC credits. Recent issuance of credits over the last three to five years has resulted in only three businesses or projects receiving credits. Two are affordable housing projects, Owasso Gardens and Edison Apartments, and then McGough's new headquarters also received some SAC credits. These requests were all over $25,000, which constitutes a formal business subsidy. Those were granted in conjunction with applications for formal public finance assistance. Because this request is less than $25,000, it is not a formal business subsidy. The city council can take action alone. It doesn't have to go before the EDA. There are no agreements or contracts that would have to be put in place in order to issue those credits. And so while we have not assisted small businesses in the past with SAC credits, Par. 365 is a small BIPOC-owned startup business, which is exactly the type of business the city wishes to attract or retain in the city. In fact, we've created several programs over the last few years aimed specifically at attracting and helping these types of businesses, including the Choose Roseville campaign, the Small Business Loan with MCCD, and a microloan program, and I believe Par. 365 is hoping to take advantage of a couple of these programs as well. So this is why we're bringing it forward at this time, is to determine if the council is interested in providing SAC credits to this business. We wanted to make sure you understood, we put some thoughtful consideration into what we've brought forward for you today, so we are looking to have a broader conversation about a SAC policy at a future meeting. We did look at what a couple of cities have done for similar situations, and this showed us that it's pretty common to provide SAC credits on an administrative basis, up to five, for these types of businesses. So that's what we've sort of formulated under a draft policy that's included in your packet. We're not asking you to make any decisions about the SAC policy. Again, this was mostly just provided. So that you understood, we put some more thought into bringing this specific request before you tonight, because they are in for a building permit. They are looking to get started, and we didn't want to necessarily delay that request while the city engaged in a broader SAC policy. So with that, we're suggesting that it would be reasonable to apply five SAC credits to this business. Staff is seeking the council's approval to do that, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and Mr. Jackson is still here as well, and he provided a narrative in the packet outlining how they would use the savings for those SAC credits if the council were to authorize them this evening.
All right. And just by way of clarification, the requirement, that $25,000 amount whereby above that, it's official business assistance, that's under state law, and that's where those would go to the EDA under the procedures there. That's where the authority or where that regulation lies.
That's right.
And then SAC is sewer access charge for folks who may not be familiar with all the acronyms. That's basically a charge from the Met Council, who runs the sanitary sewer system for this area, including Roseville, and determines how much it costs basically for new businesses to connect to the sewer system based on their anticipated water usage, and therefore their anticipated usage of the sanitary sewer system. And that's so that determination was made by Met Council. However, the city, as was explained by Ms. Gunlock, has a number of credits that we've received over the years as a result of changes in other businesses, and so those are available to be provided as assistance to businesses, and that's why this is before us this evening, because we really haven't looked at it for the smaller businesses and smaller amounts. Questions from the council for staff?
Does the applicant wish, once again, to make any comments in support of this request, or feel free to come on up and, once again, just introduce yourself, and feel free to make your statement in support of your application?
All right. Thomas Jackson, COO and founder of Par. 365 LLC. Once again, delighted to work with the city. Thank you so much for your work on this. The only thing I was going to say is the correction is, I think you said 5,000 square feet, and I think we're closer to like eight or so. So just wanted to make that clarification, and that's all that comes to hand. Thanks again for the consideration.
Thank you for being here this evening. All right. If there aren't any other questions for staff, then this is a opportunity for members of the public, once again, to speak to this item. It's a request for assistance from the city, and this is a form of assistance that the city has accumulated, as I said, in terms of credits for these charges, and so it's not necessarily a direct use of property tax money as an assistance to the business, but it is something that is a public assistance, and so it's something that's worth making sure that we check in with the public on. So if there's anyone here this evening who wishes to speak to this request this evening, this is the opportunity to do that. Once again, just briefly, I'll mention that three-minute time limit per speaker, name and address or street when you begin your comments, and address comments or questions to the council. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to speak to this item? All right. We'll close the opportunity for public comment, then, and move to council consideration. The only other thing I did want to clarify with Ms. Gunlock, too, is that there isn't anything about this application or what we're looking at here that is contrary to the policy that we're looking at considering at an upcoming meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yep. Unless you change the policy based on the draft that's in your packet, which you're certainly able to do.
Right. But as far as the prospective policy, this is in line with that. All right. Thank you for that. All right. Counsel, what's your desire in regard to this request for these credits? Councilmember Eton?
Mayor, I would move to, I can't even talk. I would move this proposal.
I'd second it.
I think I heard Councilmember Graff second that motion from Councilmember Eton. And this is, there's no resolution there or anything. It's just a motion to approve the five sewer access charge credits for this business.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. We've got the motion, the second. Discussion, as the maker of the motion, Councilmember Eton?
I let Ms. Gunlock know this in an email. I really appreciate bringing forward this way of supporting small businesses in our community. We have over $1 million in sewer access credits available to us, and this is a way to support small businesses, and appreciate the framing that you put in here with the potential future policy. I think that's excellent and is another tool for us to encourage business development here.
And Councilmember Graff as the second?
Yes, I appreciate the draft. I understand that has to be discussed, but I think that is a smart move for us to have that discussion for future, because this is an important item for small businesses, and I think this is good to help this small business get going, so I'm supporting.
All right. Other discussion? Councilmember Schrader?
This is exactly like was stated, the type of business we want to support, and this is what we have these credits available for, so I very much support this, and I think, you know, the way it was presented was excellent, so thank you for staff. And there was no doubt in my mind that this is exactly what we want to do with this type of credits and to encourage small businesses in our community, so thanks.
And any other discussion?
Have anything original to add? Good job.
All right. I think the only thing I would just add is that, you know, as was mentioned by Councilmember Eton, we do have a large backlog of credits available, and that, you know, not to say that the existing policy and process for the over $25,000 worth doesn't make sense, and certainly we've used it, as was noted, but I think if we open up this opportunity, we may find that we can actually provide much more assistance and be more helpful to small businesses, which I think helps us. There's no reason to sort of stockpile credits beyond a certain level that you might want to have on hand for whatever might come down the road, but certainly a million dollars' worth of credits is a lot. So, all right. Well, with that, we've got the motion before us. If there's no further discussion, once again, this is a motion to authorize the use of the five sewer access credits for Par. 365 LLC. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That passes unanimously, and those credits are now available. Next on the agenda this evening is to receive an update from the Public Works Department on the Victoria Street pathway funding. This was an item that was before the council earlier this year by way of a request for a resolution of support for Ramsey County's request for grant funding, which the council approved, and there have been some changes that were noted from the county in terms of which program they're going to look to use and where they think they might be most successful in finding the grant funding, and so this is just an opportunity to hear from Public Works as to what those changes are and how they may impact on the financial side. So I'll turn it over to our Public Works Director, Jesse Freihammer, to bring us up to date.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As the mayor mentioned, in March, on March 20th, council did approve a resolution supporting this application about a month or so after the county did update or did present info to the county, to the city of all where they might want to apply different funds. So just do a real quick presentation and open it up for questions. So just real quick, some background. A lot of this was in the previous pack as well, but the Victoria Street pathway, this segment would be from County Road C up to Harriet Avenue in Shoreview. It is on the city's pathway master plan and has been for some time. It's segment 10. Its preference rank, which is kind of our priority, but not called a priority, it's called a preference, is ranked 15. We have previously received a petition from a large amount of residents on Victoria back, Victoria Street in the area around back in 2016. Staff has long looked at this segment, but we've traditionally not brought this one forward with cost share through the county because it is so difficult with the topography, so we knew this would be a larger project that would need outside support for. In 2015, the county did adopt a countywide pedestrian and bicycle plan in this corridor, or was identified in that, and then in the fall of 2021, the county actually took the lead and initiated the Victoria Streets Trail Study. Some additional information on the corridor, it is about two miles long. It is split between Roseville and Shoreview, so that's how the funding would be split for the local share, with 60% of it being in Roseville. Speed limit does vary between 35 and 40 miles an hour. It does have about 5,000 to 6,000 cars a day, so a relatively high county road without any true pedestrian facility. It does have Metro Transit Route 227 on it, and then majority of the roadway does not have any separated sidewalks or trails. We do have a short segment that was constructed a few years ago south of Wood Hill, but that's about the only segment that's on there. The trail, so the map here on the right does show existing trails that would connect existing pathways on west Owasso, as well as the pathways on Wood Hill that are existing, and then there is potential for future pathways as well on County Road C2. So as part of the county's process, in 2020 and 2022, they did have public engagement as part of that. They also had a technical advisory committee consisting of Ramsey County, Shoreview, and Roseville staff. Public engagement was done between October of '21 and July of '22. They did do four open houses, with two of those being in person and two being virtual. They did three online surveys, as well as two interactive mapping activities, and then some of the results, the full study is included with materials, but just a kind of a snippet of what some of the feedback that was received on the survey results with, you know, a lot of support for adding ped bike facilities. The study was formally completed in August of 2022. The county had done two concepts. The study was formally completed in August of 2022. The county had done two concepts, basically both with a 10-foot trail, one on the east side, one on the west side. curb and gutter would be installed on the side with the trail. There's a lot of drainage improvements that are needed with this project, which was one of the reasons the cost is so high. There is no formal recommendation out of that packet or out of that study, but the big kind of analysis is leaning on the west side, and that's kind of where the county is leaning towards on the grant application. Final design, if funding is awarded and the project is approved, that would be finalized in the design phase. The design phases currently, the current proposed cross-section does fit in the existing corridor with right-of-way. So minimal, right now, the plan is not to buy right-of-way. That would get further fleshed out in the final design, but most likely impacts could be contained within the existing right-of-way. And as I mentioned, council originally did pass a resolution on March 20th. Shoreview followed that up on June 5th to apply for the federal funding. And then kind of the updates since we last brought this to council. So as we had mentioned, council or Ramsey County is applying for Metropolitan Council regional solicitation. I think that grant application gets submitted in July. It would be for funding year 2028 or 2029, so that is not changed. What has changed is the funding category the county feels they're going to apply for. So they previously were going to apply for the regional trail funding. Certainly, this project meets that qualification, but the other one that they're looking to flip to is the safe routes to school. And the main reason for that is there are three schools on this corridor, so it certainly meets the safe routes to school requirement. The fact there is three, not just one, not just two, it does span two cities. The county feels very much that we will get that application if we submit to it. There's not a lot of applications for that category compared to the regional trail one. The regional trail one is very more open-ended. A lot more people apply. The only downside to the safe routes to school, the safe routes to school funding, the maximum is a million-dollar award. The regional trail is 80, they'll fund 80% of the construction cost. So the table here on the bottom basically shows on the left the new funding source that the county is looking at. So a $4 million project, take 1,000 off from the award if the maximum award's awarded. The remaining cost would be 300,000. That would be split evenly between the county and the city per their cost share policy. And then the local share would be split between Shoreview and Roseville, with ours being 60%, so 900,000. First, the previous one, Roseville's cost would have only been 240,000. And that's assuming maximum award. So a lot of times you apply for these, you may only get a proportion of it if they're trying to spread the dollars out. So with that, that is all I have, and certainly open up to questions from the council.
All right. Are there any questions from the council on this? Councilman Schröder?
Thank you for putting this together and presenting. I have just a few questions. At what point is Roseville's share too high to do the project? So if this goes beyond 900, I mean, is there a maximum amount you feel that the city should go to?
So if we, I mean, it really depends upon how many projects we want to fund or other pathways. So Roseville's share, which I didn't mention, would, our share would become out of our municipal state aid funds. We've funded almost all of the sidewalks and pathways since I've been here with that source. Basically, if it's on a county road, the way we currently fund it is we apply for cost share dollars and we get 50/50 cost share. So this funding source would allow us to at least take that $1 million off, because otherwise, if we did that future cost share, we'd have to make up that $1 million. We do get over $1 million in MSA dollars a year, so we do have funding for that. But certainly, this project could, if we do this, it might push a few projects back. And certainly, if that cost goes up, we just need to look at prioritizing other projects. But we do currently have the money in our MSA account. Looking out five years from now, we have funds available to do this. Right now, it would not affect a project unless certainly other projects come up that we don't currently have planned or planned for.
And actually, that was one of my other questions, because I assumed that we'd have to postpone other projects at the 900 level.
Yeah. So none of the current projects we have planned out are to that level. We do have some tentative projects planned for other pathways. We're applying for, we applied for some county cost share funding for Hamlin Avenue. If we get that, I mean, that's like a $350,000 project, but that's already accounted for, even though it isn't planned. It's just we guessed that out there. We also are planning potentially for some improvements on County Road C with the county's project in the future, so we have some money set aside for that trail. And then obviously, this big one. But we don't have nothing else this large on our list currently.
And is the, with this particular part of the trail, would the maintenance expense be more than any of the other trails we maintain? Because my understanding is, even though the county would be the lead on this, that Roseville's responsible for maintaining it?
Yeah, correct. We would be responsible for maintenance. I would not anticipate the maintenance to be any higher on this trail than any other trails we currently maintain. In fact, it could be even better, because the current proposal does actually show a boulevard. We have a lot of pathways that don't have the boulevard, and we're plowing right on it. So we do have, at least this plan does account for some snow storage.
Okay. And one more. And I know you mentioned in here, so if the, if we do not get any grant funds, this project probably would not happen. Is that correct?
Most likely, the county won't push it. We, it'll probably drop off the county's proposed project list. Certainly, Shoreview and Roseville could request it through our current means, which is applying for the county's cost share amount. It would certainly apply, but everyone's amount goes up, so it does make it a lot more difficult to do. I think Shoreview is kind of in the same situation. They've typically done what Roseville's done in terms of trying to get the cost share funding, but this project, the scope has been so much higher that even the county is looking for that outside help to kind of pay for that cost differential. I think had this, the corridor been a lot easier, it probably would have been built years ago, like some of our other pathways. But with the topography next to the lake, the very rural section with the deep ditches, it does become a little more expensive than normal. The county does have a fair amount of, I'd say, contingency built in, and they are projecting out inflation. So we think the $4 million estimate is pretty conservative. So there's a chance that that goes down, but at least we're, they're shooting high right now, which is good, looking ahead.
Thank you.
And Councilman McGrath, you have a question?
Just quickly, because I understood from what Councilmember Schröder said, that there would be municipal state aid for the funding on this, and that would be projected out. So we've got that piece covered. Are any of the other trails that you spoke about as preferences or priorities, do any of them have the three schools on them? I don't, from my quick look, I didn't see any that did. So that's why this one rises to the top.
Yeah. I don't think any of the other ones that we currently have have a sidewalk really in the vicinity. Most of the, most of the schools in Roseville have at least one connection to it.
Thanks.
Councilman Schröder?
And I just wanted to confirm that application is mutually exclusive. It's not something where we could apply for each of these items?
Correct. You have to choose which category you're applying for.
Okay. And then if we were to not get one, could we apply to the other in the future?
Yeah. So, yeah, Met Council does open up the solicitation every two years. So certainly, if we don't make the qualification, we can apply in the future. So that would be for the 2030, 31 solicitation. So, and then there's other funding sources as well, potentially, but usually the Met Council ones ranks pretty high. There's other like DNR ones, but typically those are, I don't think we, this is probably the best grant applications we have to get outside funding.
Okay. Thank you.
And when is the award made on this round?
It will be, it'll be announced. It'll be made sometime this fall.
So we'll know this year?
Yep. Yeah. And once it gets approved, then, you know, the county would end up doing a grant agreement. The county would probably at that point put together a cost share agreement for the design and construction. So that's certainly another time for the council to weigh in on approval, because we'd have, that's where we'd be formally approving what our estimated cost shares at that time.
And if it doesn't get approved in this round, other projects would potentially move ahead of it in terms of what either the city or the cities, I should say, and Ramsey County might be looking at, depending on if they apply in the subsequent round in two years. And then it obviously just changes the timing anyway.
Yes.
Right. Can you talk a little bit about the process? Say the, say the funding is awarded, and this is then sort of on the calendar for that '28, '29 timeframe. What would be the next steps that would be taken in the process, and where would be the chances for members of the public to weigh in?
Sure. So if we do find out this fall, the county would probably reach out to the city in early '24 to make a formal, like I said, get a formal cooperative construction agreement, so we can agree on the cost share. Once that happens, it'll get formally adopted into the county's tip. So like I said, it'd be probably early '24. So, and then they would either plan it for '28 or '29. Some of that will depend upon when the funding is specified, because sometimes they'll put some of the funding in '28 or '29. But most likely, the county would start, if it's, say it's adopted to be a '28 construction year, most likely in 2026, they will hire a design consultant or potentially run it themselves. But most likely, design consultant, start design, reach out for public engagement to develop the final plans. So most likely, with the county's process, there'd probably be at least two meetings of some sort for public input and engagement, you know, prior to design, and then usually, once a final draft is adopted. And then ultimately, the city would end up having to sign off on that plan as well. So certainly be engagement, like I said, in '26 and '27, prior to construction, either in '28 or '29.
Great. Thank you. And are these federal dollars that are administered by the Met Council?
Correct. Yep.
Got it. Okay. Thanks for clarifying that. Other questions from the council? All right. We'll provide an opportunity, I'm just wondering if folks here this evening may be here for this item, or are you here for another item on the agenda?
Yep.
Looks like there's a few folks that wish to speak on this. So we'll provide an opportunity for public comment. I do want to note that there is no requested action of the council this evening. The council has already indicated its support of the county's application for this funding at our earlier meeting. And so not necessarily a request for action this evening from the council, but certainly, we wanted that update and to understand how the finances would work under the changed grant program that the county is looking to go to. So that's why this was before us this evening. I just wanted to make that sort of clear to folks that you certainly have every right to speak to your support or opposition to the project, but that decision is not necessarily before the council this evening. And we'll certainly have that as part of our public record of this meeting this evening. And as was noted, and that's why I asked the question, there will be further opportunities, presuming this project goes forward, pending the award of the funding, for public to be involved, especially in details about where it's going to be located and how it's configured on the site. But with that, we'll go ahead and provide an opportunity for public comment. And once again, just to go through the rules of the road, so to speak, we do provide a three-minute time limit per speaker. That's by council rule, and I do try to enforce that as gently and generously as I can, because I don't want to cut people off in the middle of their comments. But I do try to ask folks to kind of wrap up if they're starting to push the limit. The other thing is, is that when you come up to speak, we've got two microphones. And if there's a lot of people that wish to speak, there's no, nothing that says that, well, one person is speaking, the next person couldn't come up and have a seat and be ready to go right when that person is finished. So we kind of keep the process moving. In fact, if you want to be sort of on cue, you can even have a seat in the front row there and be ready to take a seat as it vacates, just to once again, kind of keep the process moving. Please begin your comments with your name and either your address or your street for the record. Direct your comments or questions to the city council. We will collect and gather the information on questions and attempt to provide or direct for the provision of answers to those questions, following everybody's opportunity to speak. Each person gets one chance to speak for this item. So make sure you use your chance wisely or take advantage of your opportunity and cover your points. If you do have additional information you want to share, certainly, you can provide that to the council as a follow-up via email or giving us a phone call or sending us a letter, whatever might be appropriate. Or if you have written testimony with you this evening, you can leave that with the city manager once you're finished with your comments, and he can distribute it to the council. I believe that's everything. I don't think I've left anything out. So with that, and you don't have to adjust the microphones or anything like that, you can feel free to have a seat to begin your comments, and the sound booth will adjust the volume levels and things like that to make sure that everybody can hear each other. With that, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Oh, the only thing I was going to add, if your name is a name that we're not going to automatically know how to spell, feel free, when you're finished with your comments, to just step off to the side. There's a clipboard. You can just write your name out, so that we can make sure it's spelled correctly for the record. With that, I'll go ahead and open up this opportunity for public comment on the Victoria Street pathway this evening. And feel free to come on up and let the council know your thoughts.
Council, thank you very much for listening to us. My name is Martin Burglin. We built our house at 2953 North Victoria in 1957 to '59. I helped my mother plant the trees, which are now mature. They're towering about 53 to 60 feet tall. Number one, we're going to lose 100 of those trees. These are defining Victoria as a corridor of old growth, and we're going to rip them out. Number two, I don't know about you, but there's something about the economy that's called inflation. Here we are. We went from $240,000 to $900,000 very quickly, and we're still five years out. Now, what's going to happen? Rob, and I like the thought that you wanted to put a cap on this to say, yes, this is what we don't do anymore because of faulting other projects. Number two, I question the, and I'm sure this data is available, question the amount of traffic that is actually on Victoria. I did a brief calculation, and on the low end, what they're telling us is there are 3.5 cars per minute 12 hours a day, 24 hours a day. I don't see that at all. Number two, or number three, this is the last comment, is I've talked to 15 of our neighbors, and nobody wants this project. This is not a community project. This is a community project that's being pushed onto our laps, our properties being taken away. I would lose 25 feet of my front yard, which puts us in jeopardy of a lot of different things. That's it. Thank you very much for listening, and I appreciate this.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much. And I'll be back.
Understood. All right. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak at this time? And don't forget, you can queue up at the other seat if you're brave enough to do that. Go on, welcome.
I'm Lawrence Ackerman. I live at 2825 Victoria Street North, and I really only heard about your project a few months ago. And my question to Public Works would be, is this still involving the existing right-of-way, or is it actually still considering the taking of private property? Because I haven't received a letter from the city regarding any, anything to do with that. Now, I'm a former employee of St. Paul Public Works. I used to work with Roger Puckrider and Bruce Elder. Now, I'm retired, and I'm an author. I have a grandmother who used to be a friend of Abraham Lincoln. But if you're planning to take my front yard, I think it's going to cost you a lot more money, because I live in America, where we have a, we have a Bill of Rights, where the Fifth Amendment to the United States Constitution includes a provision known as the TAKINGS Clause, which states that private property shall not be taken for public use without just compensation. This clause is intended to protect citizens from having their property taken by the government without fair compensation. The Supreme Court has interpreted this clause to mean that the government may take private property for public use only if it provides just compensation to the owner of the property. Now, I live in America. What country do you live in? I haven't heard of any offer to pay for my front yard, and I don't want to lose any more trees either. Thank you for your time. It's going to cost a lot of money.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak to this item at this time?
Hi, my name is Kofi, K-O-F-I, Monca, M-O-N, T-Z-K-A. I read through this 98-page report on this project, and nothing in it talked about the effect on the actual property owners who live on Victoria Street. There was a petition from 2016, which was a long time ago. Hardly any of the people who signed the petition actually live on Victoria Street. We are real people who live on that street. I have a 19-year-old son who's in diapers, who's like a two-year-old, you know, and this is a safe place for us to live. I told I told my personal care attendant about this yesterday, and the first thing out of her mind was Caleb is going to run away. Caleb is going to get hit by a car. Because we have a ton of bushes, and I can show you a picture after the meeting, but a ton of bushes that provide a buffer to the road, and I can't even bring my kid to someone else's house, because when there's a sidewalk or he sees other houses, he walks away to their homes, and knocks on their door, and tries to go in their homes. And I know we're just one, we're just one person, and I know I'm not, I'm not everybody, and I can't ask the government to make decisions for me only, but I've heard that there will be no provisions for making things safe again on my property. Plus, it will push up, you know, going 25 feet, and it'll almost be at his bedroom. And so, so it is, it's terrible. And I mean, I drove up and down Victoria last night, looking at all of the properties. This will practically be, cut off my neighbor's garage at 3295 Victoria Street. So I just feel like there hasn't been much attention paid to the people who actually live on the street. And I'm very, very afraid for my son, and worried we're going to have to move because of it. Second, I don't want any talk, oh, this is just a county project, because the cities of Shoreview and Roseville are paying for half of it. You guys do have power. You voted on that resolution, you could withhold the money, and this would not happen. So you have power. I really want you to consider the community members' thoughts and feelings, and I know you've already voted on it, but I'm hoping you'll vote again, because the cost has increased astronomically. I hope you'll wait to approve your vote until you have all the information. We don't even know what the plans are going to be. It's going to be two sidewalks, one, you watch that video, there's like 16 different ideas. And so I would like you to have all of the information, just like when you make personal decisions in your life, you have all the information before you vote, and I would hope that you would do that. Know exactly what the plan is going to be, and then it seems like you have all this public comment, but I don't know. At some point, I'd like to know if you guys consider what we say. It's my birthday, I came back from a trip early to be at this meeting. If you guys aren't going to listen, I don't expect you to, if you're not going to consider what we have to say, you've already voted, like you say, you already have a resolution, you guys can talk if you want, then I don't want to come anymore. I want you guys just to be honest, like we've made our decision, we don't care what you say, just let us know right now, if that's, if that's the case, because I want to know, I want to know if you're really listening to us. Also, the safe schools thing, I don't know if you're going to get the money, because everyone in Roseville has busing. My kids have been in Roseville, I have a senior next year, all three of them. They, all of them have mandatory busing, so none of those little kids are walking to school. So I don't know if you're going to get the safe school funding. And then I know my time's coming to an end, so what I would like of you is to, you guys to consider your resolution again, I hope you can do so. I also want some of you, all of you, any of you, to actually come to my house, meet my son, look at our property. Do like I did, I walked the road last night, I drove the road and looked at how much it's going to take. I walked the 25 steps in, the 25 feet in. So that's my ask of you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I should have mentioned at the beginning that we don't do applause, or boos, or jeers for anybody who speaks, because this is not an entertainment opportunity, it's a public forum. No problem, no problem. We come to these meetings all the time, we know a lot of you here are here for your first time, so we know the rules, and we just try to make sure that we're as easy on everybody as possible as we enforce them.
Okay, Mayor, council members. John Kisselish, on 383 Victoria Street. I think I'm in my 35th year living on Victoria Street. Couple of bullet points here before I get to my questions. As I, as I understand the council's action taken at the previous meeting, you passed a resolution to spend roughly $250,000. I don't remember that resolution that you passed claiming that you're going to spend a million dollars. That isn't what it said. That resolution was based on about $250,000 or $260,000. This claim that there's a million dollars that's available, has anybody in this room here actually looked at the last grants that were approved? There weren't any million-dollar grants approved for the sidewalk, the safe sidewalk-to-school deal. The maximum dollar amount was $500,000, and the average amount was around $330,000. So whoever's coming up with this million-dollar claim here is just pulling it out of their hat. That, that isn't what the previous numbers show, sorry. This issue about that the estimates for inflation are conservative, all I can tell you is I've got the sheet from MMB for bonding projects, and this is for people that are applying for bonding money for this next legislative session. It says here, if you are going to be building your project September of '29, at 31.97%. So that's a million dollars, what we're talking about here. So that's, that's not, I don't know if that's a conservative number, that's the number that MMB is saying to use. So on the questions here, so I don't expect to get answers to any of these questions today, in fact, to be honest, I don't expect to get answers to any of these questions ever. But as I'm writing these questions down here, I'm trying to ask myself the question, why doesn't this make any sense? Because it doesn't make any sense. I've never heard of the city giving another unit of government a million bucks and say, do whatever you want to do with it, we're just taking our hands off, you know, hands off, do whatever you want to do with it, not our problem. You engage citizens, we're not going to have anything to do with it. I've never heard of that before. It's like, it's like the county building a library and saying, here you go, City of Roseville, you staff it and fill it with books. I've never heard of anything like that. We also have a 20-year-old policy that states that we construct pathways based on scientific ranking. This project here, if I counted correctly, is like number 15. Now, somebody said, well, that's a priority. Yeah, but is 15 out of like 25 what you would call a priority? I know if you were asking for a gift at Christmas or something like that, your parents got you the 15th item on your list, you'd probably say, Dad, that really wasn't a priority of mine. Other things that I'm trying to figure out here is that we have an existing pathway 1,500 feet to my east that goes to Shoreview. We got another pathway that's 2,500 feet to the west of my house that goes to Shoreview. We got pathways on both sides. So I'm, I'm, I'm under, that may be part of the reason why we're ranked number 15th on the list. And then one of the other citizens here mentioned about schools.
Right, you're at about 3:20 right now.
Okay, I'll finish up with my school deal, is that I don't appreciate the county or the city looking the other way, while the county lies to the state and says that we've got kids walking to school. The Roseville School District is unique. We bus all kids, K through six, to their front driveway and back, and when I wanted to allow my kid to walk home, I had to sign a waiver declining bus service. So that's the system we have in Roseville, that's not the system in other school districts, most are not that way. So I come back to this question here of-
No, you're, actually, you're finished with your comments now.
So I ask, if you do have the chance, Mayor-
You're finished.
-try to respond to some of these questions here. Try to put some common sense into this, because it's just confusing. I don't get it. I don't understand.
About 4:20 now, so, thank you. Right, is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak to this item? Hello, and welcome.
Hello, I'm Ken Monzka from 3283 Victoria Street. And I think what I'm, I was, you know, I'm trying to listen to whatever everyone else said, and I think that, and you talked about the rural street, and that is the, a character of the street, and it's why biking clubs bike up that street on their way, and they go through, and, you know, they do that because it's, it's rural. The bikers aren't going to go on to, always bikers want to bike on a shoulder, and they don't like bike trails, they don't like to say, on your left, on your left, on your right, all the time, they don't want to do that, so they like to bike on the street. So that's, you're not going to change that when you do that. And you're gonna, you're gonna, the trees that are all on the sides as you drive up there, or like when you, I don't know if you've driven on Victoria on a snow day where the, where the snow sticks to the trees, and it's all just frosted up, and all that's going to be gone, you know, it's, it's going to go away. The other thing I thought about is, you know, Ramsey County, you know, is doing this, and I remember when Ramsey County said, we're going to give you, we're going to get a million dollars, and we're going to do something with Lake Owasso. And, and everyone was, okay, great, let's do, million dollars, we're going to improve Lake Owasso, it's going to be great when we're done. But you look at Lake Owasso today, I don't, have you go, I don't know if any of you go to Lake Owasso, but there's no more trees there, they put the little silly, little cement, little blocks that you go down and, and the plows, now they had to repair that this year, because that's a mess, and that, you know, letting Ramsey County just do something, it's not automatic that you're going to improve anything by throwing a million dollars at something, or $4 million, or whatever it is. And so, you, just because the money is there, and it's, you know, it's not going to necessarily improve anything. And I just, especially historically, looking at what Ramsey County just did to Lake Owasso, which is no more trees, couple little umbrellas with a table up, make a little prairie area instead of the beautiful grassy, you know, I used to have to be, letting your dogs on the beach over there, playing fetch, whatever, you know, all taken away. I mean, all that, it's, it was a subtraction from what they, what they do with their million dollars, and there's no reason to believe that it's not going to be a subtraction to Victoria Street, to have it just be barren and treeless as you drive down the road with a sidewalk on the side. So I'd like you to think about that.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak to this item this evening? All right. Once again, okay, then we'll close the opportunity for public comment, and I do want to thank folks for being involved and being interested. As was noted, and I should note, the city didn't approve the project by any means at this point. What the city has done is, the city has supported Ramsey County's request to seek the funding. So there are a number of other steps along the way that would have to be approved by the city, including approval of what our final cost share would be. And so I just want to make it clear that this, this is not something where there's no more chance for public input, or no more chance for changes to not impact the decision-making, because there's a whole lot left to be done on the project before any dirt gets moved or anything else happens, and so I did want to make that clear. There were a couple of other questions that I did want to answer, too. It was noted by staff that there was no expectation right now that the project would exceed or go beyond existing right-of-way for the road, so there's no anticipation at this time that there would be a need to acquire additional right-of-way from individual property owners. Certainly, that could be a possibility, depending on the final plans, and that would not happen without further opportunity for public engagement, public input in that process, not the least of which is actually required, if that is the case, as was noted, to provide fair compensation. And actually, what we do as a city, and I think it's a good policy, is that we actually seek appraisals, and if the, the increase to the value based on the improvement doesn't match what an assessment might be, we actually limit our ability to assess a property on that basis. The other thing I would say is that absolutely, there would be compensation for acquisition of right-of-way, but as was noted in the comments barrier, Public Works Director, currently there is not any anticipation that there would be, but once again, that could change as the plans get more fleshed out, because this is fairly early stages in the process. So that was one of the things I did want to make sure and address. In terms of the inflation, and I should note that the difference in the dollars that you were hearing was not a result of inflation, the project total is the same either way. The difference is, is where the dollars is coming from, the city's portion of the paying for the same amount is what has changed, because the county's looking to go for a different type of grant that they think they have more success in getting, which isn't as big an amount, and therefore, that puts more on to the county and those two cities to pay. And so our share changed, but it's not like suddenly the costs increased by any amount, it's the same dollar amount that's anticipated and projected for the project, but just how that's divided up amongst who pays for it is what had changed since that initial resolution was, was adopted. And the resolution wasn't a resolution saying we would pay for something, the resolution was a resolution saying we support applying for the grant. The other thing I wanted to mention is the traffic, actually, we do very frequently measure the traffic counts on a lot of the streets in Roseville, and we've got records of that, that are actually available on maps from the Public Works Department, either through the website, or you can ask the folks at Public Works Department for that information. They've got traffic counts for most of our county roads, and a lot of our other roads that are done on a periodic basis, and we try to keep those up to date, because those enter into a lot of our decision-making about required road improvements. If somebody's doing a development that's going to increase traffic, we want to understand how that impacts, since we want to know what the base traffic is that we're, that we're starting from, and that's why we frequently do those counts. The other thing, the other thing we always do the counts for is to verify projections into the future, to make sure that actually, those are either happening or aren't happening, and we can make our adjustments to the, to analyses going forward as well, based on actual traffic counts. So that is something important that we do, and we've got pretty reliable information on the traffic counts on most roads in the city. As to the details of the plan, once again, this is very early stages, so there's going to be much more work, assuming the project goes forward, on actually developing plans, much more work in conjunction with residents about specific impacts to properties. That's usually a step on projects, both that the city might do and projects where the city is a partner with the county, because it's important to, in fact, a lot of times we do a walkthrough with residents, and we actually stop at each property and talk about what the impacts might be, and what, what might need to be done by way of mitigating them. And just in the regard to trees, I know the city is very concerned about tree loss, and we do have pretty strict requirements for tree replacement that we'll be looking at on projects as they go forward in the city. But certainly, the city council and staff also share those concerns about potential loss of trees, and try to look at ways to minimize those in the first place, but also then see if there's ways to mitigate or add new trees to take the place of any that might be lost. In terms of sort of this notion of giving the county a million dollars and washing our hands of it, as was outlined in the previous presentation by staff, one of the first steps that was taken as this project started to come under consideration was that the county developed a team with the two cities' public work departments to work in tandem with each other in looking at this and figuring out what, what might happen going forward, and certainly, that doesn't stop once we receive grant funding. Anytime the county is building a project in the city of Roseville, it's pretty, and actually, it's true of the state, too, there's very heavy involvement with our city staff, making sure that the interests of our community are looked at and understood as part of the project, and that wouldn't be any different on something like this. We've done a number of pathways in partnership with the county over the years, primarily where we're requesting partner support from the county on a project that the city might be leading, but it's not that the county hasn't led projects as well. But either way, certainly, the, the two entities work together on these things, and we, the city, as was mentioned, does have an opportunity to pass on the final project once more detailed design is done and the cost share is better understood. So I think at the end, the city does have that opportunity to say yes or no, once we get further down the road, presuming that this grant application is even successful. So that's just a couple of ways, maybe I've gone over the bounds of actually just answering questions, but I did want to make sure and provide some context and information. Certainly, if the council has anything else they wanted to add, or any other questions for staff, this would be an opportunity to do that at this time. All right. So like one of the speakers said, they'll be back, we fully expect that, we'll be here, and as was noted, depending on where things go with this grant application, there either will or won't be additional steps, and if the grant application doesn't happen, it sounds like this project gets pushed out to another grant process, or even further, just depending on what the finances are and what other priorities come up. Speaking of priorities, the only other thing I was going to speak to, and this may be more of an editorial comment, this project is, is around 15th out of a number of projects. One of the things the city always, and first of all, the number is not like 20, it's like, I think there's, I want to say something like 60 or 70 ultimately, so it's, it's very much in the high, high end of that. But the other thing is, is that we always, as a city, as we have the opportunity to build projects, say a road project is being done, or something like that, we will try to do a higher priority project, maybe earlier than it might otherwise be done, if we have an opportunity that comes along, because it's, it's facilitated by doing it hand-in-hand with another road project, or something like that. And so, you know, we don't just do number one and number two, and we wait until the opportunity to do number three, even if we may have, have a chance to do eight, nine, or 10. We try to certainly focus on the highest priorities, but also take advantage of opportunities, and that's kind of what this is, in the sense of the county going forward with attempting to get some grant funding, because we all realize that this is a fairly expensive project, and needs that kind of help to make it happen. So that's the last, I think, comment in answer to questions that were brought up. With that, we look forward to hearing from folks as additional steps in the process happen, and it's, like I said, it's entirely dependent on what happens with that grant approval round, and I don't know, Mr. Fryhammer, if there's anything else you wanted to add from a staff perspective?
Nope.
All right. Or any corrections you wanted to make of what I said? All right. Very good. Well, once again, thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. We certainly welcome you to stay for the rest of the exciting items on our agenda. you to stay for the rest of the exciting items on our agenda this evening. But if you've got better things to do with your time, we understand that as well. So thanks again.
Thank you.
With that, then, we've got a couple of other business items here. The first is actually to receive information relevant to next year's property tax bills for people in Roseville. And that's to hear information about changes to our tax base, legislative changes that may drive our budget and costs for the city and other things. And so we have our Finance Director, Michelle Petrick, with us this evening to give us that update, in maybe conjunction with Mr. Tredgen as well. But I'll turn it over to Ms. Petrick to kick it off.
Sounds good. Ramsey County assesses property and releases their updated numbers at the beginning of '23, which we use for the '24 budget. The overall market value for the city of Roseville is increasing in 2023 by 6.65%. In 2022, for the '23 budget, our overall market value increased 12.99%. So value increases are not as drastic as they were for 2023. The median value, single-family home, is increasing by 4.35% from $335,400 to $349,900. Other residential properties increased by slight percentages, as noted in the council report. Where the big increases are occurring is in our commercial sector. Office is, again, based on the '22 market values and sales. Office is slated to increase 42.49%, with an estimated median value of slightly over $1 million. Retail is an increase of 4.5%. And industrial increased 12.82%. In aggregate, the median single-family home rose less than all other property types. So what we will see is more of a shift towards the commercial and industrial side. But at this point, we can't project exactly how it shifts, because the two pieces that we need to calculate our property tax rate outside of the budget, which is a big piece, are the total market value and our fiscal disparities distributions. And Ramsey County does not release that data until the end of August. We used to get it in the middle of August, and we're really hoping that we can get it sooner than we did last year. But at this point, this is the value that is out there. And it is on the Ramsey County assessor's website. So if you want to delve into all the various components, you certainly can. And with that, Pat's going to cover legislative updates.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, just want to talk briefly about the legislative session, as we all know, is a very busy session. And typically, we get to this part of the presentation. There's not a lot of direct impact, but there was a whole bunch of impact on this budget cycle. I won't go through each one. You can read them. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. But things as public safety due to disability, where there's full state funding for PTSD claims, as far as treatment, as far as health insurance coverage by the state versus the city, will impact the city in a positive way, I guess, if you look at it from the cost perspective. Paid family, paid family and medical leave will be a cost for the city. Does not take effect until 2026, but there is payroll tax that the city will have to contribute. Employees can contribute, or will be able to contribute part of that payroll tax, but that will be a cost for the city. Earned sick and safe time for our seasonals, will we have to give, we have to give them sick and safe time for them. That's something that they currently don't get. Adult-use cannabis is a large issue. I'll just focus on the monetary side. There is a tax as part of that, that cities will be getting. We're unsure on what that distribution formula is at this point and what that can be used for, but there will be some revenues coming in. Obviously, there's a cost on our side for enforcement. I do intend to tee up with the city attorney a future conversation about the cannabis law. There's a lot of things that we have to do. It has been stated repeatedly that they do not expect the state that is retail sales until January 1st, 2025. So there's a little bit of time, but we do need to get some things in order here. So we'll start working through that. One significant positive increase is aid to cities. There is public safety aid one time. When Governor Walz was here presenting his budget, he did mention that. Roseville's share is going to be 1.594 million, just under 1.6 million dollars. So it's really a great opportunity for us to invest in certain things, especially capital. So as I put together my budget, we'll be considering that. It's one-time money, but certainly, that's something that can be put to good use. There's been a lot of shifts in tax rates in 4D, which is low-income housing, as well as homes that market value exclusion. Not sure how it's going to shake out, but it'll just be shifting tax burdens within the big pie. It's not a direct lowering of cost for the city. As you know, we have the local sales tax. That's something that needs to go in front of the voters in 2024. We, there is a sales tax for metro housing, .25, that we will be receiving some additional dollars. I think there's some things we'll need to do to get set up to receive those dollars. So we'll be working on that. Transportation, environment, energy, all had additional funding for grand dollars. So programs, as they trickle down to us, we may have better opportunity. I would mention under the transportation, tab fees were increased, somewhat controversial, but from, from our perspective, that is additional revenue that we'll be able to collect and something that we've identified as a legislative priority for, for a while. Would mention, too, state bonding. We're unsuccessful for the Oval this cycle. We have about, the cost is now closer to $900,000, I believe, that we have already submitted to the state for a 2024 bonding request. This is the HVAC unit. It's the same request we had the last couple years, but we hope to get that into the future. Would also mention, very generally, as you know, every year, we have rising costs for employees, whether that's COLA or step increases. We do have a couple of union contracts up this year. And I'm sure the market is going to dictate something a little bit higher than we typically see. We'll have to factor into a COLA. We also have the classification and compensation study, which we'll have to find ways to implement. Once we get those answers in there, so all those will have great impact. Across the board, we have seen rises in prices for a variety of things, whether it's vehicles and supplies. And, you know, that ranges from a few percents to a larger percent. So it's kind of all over the board. We know our utility costs will continue to go up, both with water and sewer. Those things will continue to rise. So there's a lot of pressure to this budget. That's going to be upward trend. I have just recently completed all my individual department budget meetings and going over their requests. So we're assembling those and starting to work on getting to a reasonable amount of proposal that I can submit to the city council for your consideration later in August. But while, while there has been some additional new dollars, there's also continuing pressure just from the general economy and everything that, that does go up. It's not seeming to come down. So it's going to be staying up there for a while. So we are trying to factor that in the best we can. So there's a lot of different approaches, but certainly, I want to be cognizant of where we have tried to bend over the years and trying to have a reasonable tax increase for things that we actually need. And we'll have those conversations down the road, certainly. So, you know, one of the things we're looking forward, to the extent that you are prepared at this time to talk about any priorities, any, any guidance you want to give me as I finalize the budget to bring forward to you, I'd be all ears on that, about whether it's specific programs, if it's specific numbers you're looking at, whether it's percentage increases or other things. I would like to hear that. I would finally mention that we have just some information about our cash reserve. And you've seen, you've seen a lot of this information before, but we just put that there for reference. So if you have any questions, Michelle, I'll be able to answer that for you. So that's really the extent of our presentation. And certainly happy to answer any questions on the information we provided. And certainly ready to listen, if you have any guidance.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tredgen and Ms. Petrick. Actually, one thing I was wondering is, from a visual aid point of view, do we have that table that was in our report about the various amount of value changes for the different types of property and the overall for the city?
I can pull it up, Michelle.
It may be while, while you're looking for that. I just wanted to note a couple of things that just come out of this preliminary information from the Ramsey County Assessor. And I shared it with other council members, and I think our finance commission as well. So if we did not change our levy from '23 to '24, theoretically, with some assumptions, the tax bill for the average median, single-family property, even though their value would go up 4.4%, as was noted, their tax, if we didn't change our budget levy at all, would actually go down by about 1.3%. So that's kind of interesting to know. So that's sort of the, if you keep everything constant, what's the impact on, on the single-family median property? If we kept our tax rate the same, in other words, that's the percent that you multiply by your value to get your tax essentially. If we kept that the same in '24, theoretically, our levy could increase by about 6.6%, roughly, with the same tax rate. So there is theoretically, perhaps, some ability to, to absorb some cost increases or those sorts of things without tremendously significant impact on taxpayers. I think we always have to, you know, be careful how we express those things. It's not like there's not going to be an impact. But certainly, in that instance, the impact to the median, single-family home, their tax bill would go up by approximately the same percentage as their value went up. And so that would be hopefully potentially perceived as being sort of equitable, because, oh, my value went up by a certain amount, my tax went up by the same amount. I don't know. That's just a thought and a theory. But I just wanted to kind of put some parameters on our discussion there, just to maybe help, help flesh that out. And once again, we'll be getting more detailed information from the county that will probably adjust some of those numbers up or down. But it's at least a first look at things. And like I said, I'm not advocating for any of those paths to be taken necessarily, but at least that helps kind of frame where we're at and what might be some impacts as we move forward. But I certainly, as staff, would welcome council thoughts, input, or questions. Councilmember Strong.
I had a question about the office percent increase of 42.49%. Is that based on anything in particular? And is that just Roseville? Or is that the whole region? Or how do we compare?
The numbers that I presented here are for the city of Roseville only.
So we don't know if somehow we're at 42 and Maplewood's at 20? We don't know that information?
It's in the county assessor's report.
Yeah, it's in the county assessor's report. If you go to their website, you can drill down on various cities within Roseville.
Okay.
And that's, that's the total property valuation change, right? In office, between '23, pay '24, or '22, pay '23, and '23, pay '24?
Yeah.
So if there was a lot of office built, that would reflect in this number. It might not just be totally a value increase on, on individual office properties?
Correct.
Obviously, that might have to enter into it to get this kind of percent increase.
Correct. And these numbers, again, are based on what the market was doing in '22. And also, when the estimated property bill comes out, actually, would have come out in April with your tax bill, you get, individuals and business owners get provided their value. In a lot of cases, that's when people start appealing their assessments. And we'll get a report later in the year, but I do know last year, a lot of the tax appeals were in the commercial and retail sector. So just because the assessor says the value goes up this amount, and theoretically, we can estimate some numbers until we know the impacts of tax appeals, which will factor into our total estimated market value that we get from the county, which then calculates the tax rate. But they released this early in the year, and it's based on the prior year, and it's for the upcoming tax year. So there's a lot of years in motion, but these are the numbers the county gave us.
Councilmember Strong?
So on the office, since that's kind of a big number, is that partly affected by what happened in 2020, 2020, 2021, and 20?
Could be.
Because did it go down at that time? And then?
It didn't increase significantly during the COVID years, 2021. The commercial, retail, and industrial were smaller percentage increases. And now this could be a rebound.
It's a big number.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and ultimately, what it gets to is, is the sort of, we still levy a certain amount. We have control over how much that changes. But ultimately, what these changes affect is kind of how that's distributed amongst the various property tax types or property payers in the city. So sometimes, if values on the commercial side are increasing more quickly or at a higher rate than values on the single-family residential side, there's kind of a shift of the burden. And that can, can increase the change or magnify the change that we make in our levy as it's impacted on one or the other type of property. So that's, you know, we, we try to be conscious, especially of the single-family homeowner, because that's the largest category of taxpayer we have, just in terms of the numbers that are out there of properties paying that tax. Certainly, our largest dollar value taxpayers are the commercial taxpayers, which pay a significant portion of our overall tax. But anyway, so that's kind of just to get to, it's not like suddenly, we're going to be asking the office people to pay a huge amount more. It's just because their percentage of the overall pie, so to speak, is changing. Councilmember Shorter?
I had a couple of questions on the budget impact on the legislative session. The first one on the earned sick and safe time. What does, what is the city doing now? I'm trying to think about what we're doing now versus what's mandated.
So for seasonal employees, these are the typically people we have during the summer for recreation. We do not provide any accrued PTO or sick time at all. So this would require us to do that at the rates that.
So 100% of that?
Yeah. So whatever we would have to do, that'd be a new cost to us.
Okay. And then, do you have any information on the 50 cents fee on the delivery over $100 worth? Because I thought the city gets a piece of that. Do you have any information on that?
I don't. Councilmember Shorter, I did see that in the legislation. I wasn't aware that there was any money coming our way, but I can certainly look into that. Not sure how that would, would work. That'd be interesting to follow up on.
Yeah, I figured if we got some money coming our way, that would be nice. Thank you.
Other questions or thoughts from councilmembers? Councilmember Strong?
I wanted to follow up on the earned safe and sick leave. So it's one hour per 30 hours work. So if a young or any aged person worked in as a seasonal employee, and they know, don't currently earn any sicker vacation time, it could be an hour plus per, a couple hours per paid period. And as presented, they would be able to take that after 80 hours of work. But it did say that the city, other cities, safe and sick timely, that this will not preempt them. So it might behoove us to consider what the long-term ramifications are, if we wanted to put something in place in the meantime that had a different floor. But I still think it's a great opportunity for people who don't have access or don't, who are part-time. But we do have some time. It's still the 26th. It's not till 26. There's also the FMLA.
Paid family leave.
Paid family leave piece. And that's up to 20 weeks. I haven't seen what distinction there is and how it gets to 20 weeks. But it's similar to FMLA, but, but it is a paid time, which FMLA, Family Medical Leave, is not paid. It's just job protected with benefits.
Right. Other thoughts, feedback, questions? Councilmember Braden?
To address some of your questions about goals, for me, I think we are doing a lot of the things that are important. And I wouldn't look for any major changes from what we're doing right now. As you look at, are there any major things the council wants or not? For me, I think we are doing a lot of excellent things. And I would not look for major changes. Would note that certainly inflation over the last couple of years has been extremely high. And while it's coming down, we may be paying the piper now. And so that may, we may not be able to pay the, look at the lower number that is true in this moment, as we look at how we create this budget, as we look at some fixed things or big picture, buying pipes for sewer lines, whatever. That's just gone up in the last buying pipes for sewer lines, whatever. That's just gone up in the last couple of years, and we haven't necessarily kept up with that yet.
I think one of the things we try to do is look at how much we do along those lines in terms of capital projects, if the costs are just so much higher. So we always try to balance all that. Councilmember Schroeder?
Talking about priorities, I think, you know, again, we just went over the goals for the city manager. And so I think a lot of what I'm considering priorities are in those goals. But I just wanted to mention the financial sustainability, once the ARPA funds are gone. To me, you know, that's going to be a challenge, and so we want to make sure we can get that covered. And then the other piece, you know, with all, we know staffing is a huge issue, and what it's going to take, you know, I've talked to the different department heads about what to recruit and to retain our staff is going to take a lot more than it has in the past. So I have a feeling that's going to be a huge piece, and that's really important priority for me, that we figure out how we can maintain and promote more employment here.
All right. Other thoughts, questions? Councilmember Brown?
Can you remind us of when we're hoping to have that classification and compensation study?
I'm looking to Rebecca. I need a lot of data to put into my budget, so I'm hoping by mid-July, I have what I need to put in there. But it's an ongoing process, so I'll turn it over to Rebecca.
Mayor, Councilmember Eddon, we are in still the process of collecting the data from the market survey, waiting on some cities to get that information back to us. The goal is to have information to the city manager in big, broad terms for that budget, probably end of July is when we'll have big, broad terms for the market information. It might be a little bit more refined by then. We have a check-in this week with our consultants that we might have more detail on if they've gotten all the survey data back or not.
And I will be presenting the preliminary budget in August, so just looking at August 21st. So certainly want to make sure that information's included. And as part of that's one thing, is to have the numbers, but it's also the implementation. How do we, how do we attack that and approach that? So I'll have strategies for that as well.
Do overnight, just for you?
Yeah, yeah. Burning the midnight oil for sure.
And certainly, I think the challenge we always have is that we can set our levy not to exceed a certain amount in that September timeframe. We may not have the whole picture-
Correct.
-of the detail of what it's, what it's going to take in terms of the budget and the cost side of it. So I'm imagining, as in the soul of saying, it's the big picture that at least helps you hopefully kind of get that high estimate in and see how that affects everything else in the budget, so that we can, as you decide how to put it all together and present it to us as a recommendation, that you're able to account for that as best you can. But then how it impacts everything else, I think that's, that's going to be something to really be interested in. But I think that also gets to what Councilmember Schroeder had mentioned about, you know, that attracting and retaining employees. That's one of the primary reasons we're doing this study. Councilmember Strong?
I'd just like to reiterate how important it is to many, many people, that our public safety continues to have the resources, the advanced life support, the additional firefighters that we put in a couple of years ago because of increased calls, and the social workers who are embedded within the, and a lot of that is grant-funded, but that and the Housing Navigator and some of these intern, I think they really are, are very, very important to what we do. Anecdotally, someone just shared that they had a couple of social workers come up with the police department, and just, they were so impressed by the person who needed that type of mental health care. And so I just think that's the way of our, that's how we're going to be effectively policing in the future, and we just need to continue. That's going to have to be a really high priority as we look at the budget, and it's going to get harder and harder, like Robyn, like Councilmember Schroeder mentioned, you know, as we don't have those ARPA funds. But I think that has to be a priority that we set, that that was our really key. As we see an explosion in mental health issues and youth crime and other things like that, we need to make sure we have the resources to address those in a humane, reasonable way that works for the people of our city.
And I would just add to that, that I think that, that one-time funding from the state on the public safety side may be an opportunity to help bridge ARPA dollars that we have been using towards ultimately supporting it with levy or other funds, because we got that sort of a windfall, so to speak, in that area, but not maybe in other areas where we're losing ARPA funding. And so, you know, to the extent that we can leverage some of that state dollars, the one-time dollars, to help that transition, especially in the public safety side, can help in other areas. So just to kind of build in on that. Certainly, probably not things you hadn't thought of yourself, but certainly want to-
I'm glad we're thinking alike.
At least confirm those.
Yep, yes.
Anything else from the council by way of thoughts, questions, direction? As always, it's going to, the budget will be a challenge. There's lots of potential uses for funding and not always all the funding that can be used for it. So we have to make those tough calls. And that's why we pay you the big dollars.
Exactly.
Although that might be one opportunity for saving.
Wait a second.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Ms. Petrick. Thank you, Mr. Trudgen. I believe that then brings us to our final business item this evening, which is to consider a proclamation declaring June as National Gun Violence Awareness Month. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Trudgen to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have much to present. As you know, in the case, we talk about kind of the history here. We're bringing this forward in conjunction with Councilmember Strong and Mayor Rowe, and working on some language that, one of the directions, we talked about this last year as the council, that we wanted to maybe recognize this, but have a more local angle on how it was impactful to Roseville. So the proposed language in the National Gun Violence Awareness Proclamation does try to do that, as well as just talk about some statistics on why that is. Would note that the Gun Violence Awareness Day was June 2nd of this year, so that's passed. But there's also Gun Violence Awareness Month. Even though we're late in the month, it's probably important to still proclaim that. And then as we move to future years, we have a template, so to speak, to utilize here. As this is the first time that you've seen the language, we just did that one of the proclamations, and have you listened to the mayor read and really have no say in it. So we wanted to make sure that we have a conversation at least about this. But both Mayor Rowe and Councilmember Strong did contribute to the language. So if you have any questions about that, I think all of us are available to respond.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Trudgen. And just by way of sort of introductory comments, I did want to note that we did drop the ball a little bit on this, because the council had had that discussion last year when the original proposal was before us. And we had sort of directed ourselves as an entity to come back with something in time for National Gun Violence Awareness Day this year. And the day came up in all my social media feeds and on the calendar, and I realized we had not done that. So the first thing I did was apologize to Councilmember Strong for that oversight. And then we reached out to Mr. Trudgen and realized the opportunity to try to still recognize the month, being that there is that, that aspect of it too. So that's what brings it before us this evening. And so we'll turn it over to council. I don't know, Councilmember Strong, if there's anything you wanted to say as sort of by way of introduction as well, or we can put it up to the rest of council for questions or feedbacks?
Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to take this back up. I wasn't sure after last year that, I was confident that we were in a place to move forward with it, and I appreciate the opportunity to collaborate and to offer the language that is presented. That feels very holistic and really speaks to why this is important. As time goes by, almost every day, we are aware of gun violence in our neighborhoods around us, in the world, and so many of us are impacted daily. And I think it's a small measure, moving toward action to acknowledge and to hold that space for those who have been damaged by gun violence. And hopefully, we can take even more steps. But our city has already taken some good steps, and I'm very proud of our work. And like I said, I'm very proud of our mental health, because that is really important to prevention as well. So I thank you for the opportunity to bring this forward as it is, and I do hope it will be some, a model that we can use annually moving forward.
Great. Questions, thoughts from councilmembers? Councilmember Groff?
Just thoughts, reading through it. I appreciated the, the work that was done on bringing it to Roseville and specifically addressing some things that had happened in Roseville with the shooting of Officer Ryan Duxbury, and also some of the things the department has done on holding free gun return in events and disposing of guns. I think that was really important information to get out there, and I like having that in the proposal here.
Other thoughts, questions from councilmembers? Doesn't sound like we may be doing a lot of wordsmithing from the bench here, huh?
No, I don't want to do that.
All right.
I like it.
I do want to provide an opportunity for public comment. If there is anyone from the public who wishes to speak to our proposed proclamation this evening, once again, you heard, hopefully, the instructions or rules of the road for public comment, the three-minute time limit, begin your comments with your name and address or street for the record, and direct comments or questions to the council.
All right. Thank you. I'm Jill Chisholm. I live at 638 Level Avenue West in Roseville. First of all, I want to thank you, Mayor Rowe, and Councilmember Strong, and the council as a whole, for bringing this forward. I think the National Gun Violence Awareness Month proposal is important. I think it's going to do a little bit of good this year and hopefully in years to come. Tonight, I'm representing myself as a citizen, and I'm also representing myself as a mother and grandmother, and also the Moms Demand Action Organization. We have an active Northeast Metro chapter, and our sister organization, Be Smart for Kids. We've been active in the community for many years, educating and raising awareness of ways to prevent gun violence. So one might say, well, we haven't had much trouble with gun violence in Roseville, or we probably won't. But that's where we need to think proactively and preventively. And that's why I thank you so much for this proposal and bringing it forward. We can do a lot to educate the public about safe firearm storage, suicide prevention, listening when people in our community are in distress, and responding appropriately. Now, just this past Saturday, at the Juneteenth celebration at Central Park, some of my fellow volunteers were working at a table and distributing literature, and those were the Be Smart for Kids people. And they, their message is completely nonpartisan. This is not a political issue. This is about, let's keep kids safe, let's keep homes safe, let's store firearms safely, let's make sure that young people in schools know to listen to their friends in distress, and on and on. There's so much we can do in terms of prevention. So by unifying as a community and declaring a month out of the year to focus on gun violence prevention, we can just increase those partnerships. On Saturday, the volunteers connected with Chief Scheider and Sergeant, what's his name, Pittsle, I think, but the new community officer, sharing some thoughts, you know, planning to partner for the work ahead. We all need to work together, and this Awareness Month could just increase our impact and save lives. And that is what all of us want. This is, it's been a really interesting meeting, and all of these things are important. But saving lives and keeping our kids safe is probably the top priority, I think, for everyone here. And it's outside of the realm of politics and partisanship. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak to this item?
My name is Ed Hutter, and I am at 1083 Schreier Avenue West in Roseville. I just want to speak to actually an issue that came up at Envision Roseville, one of our meetings with the community. And the students at the high school were saying that they were feeling safe at school, but not in the community. And I wanted to bring that to your attention to drill down into what the concerns were with the students not feeling safe in the community. That's all I had to say. But I wanted to bring that to your attention, because it was very disturbing in our Envision meeting that that was their concern. So I just wanted to air that. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. All right. Anyone else from the public who wishes to speak to this item? Thank you again for your comments and input. We have the requested proclamation before us. If there's no objection from the council, I would go ahead and read the proclamation, and then we can have a motion? All right. Proclamation reads as follows: Whereas, according to an analysis of international cause of death data, Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people on average in 28 other high-income countries. And whereas, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention's data indicates there are 117 Americans killed by gun violence every day, along with more than 200 who are shot and wounded. And on average, there are over 16,500 gun homicides in the U.S. every year. And whereas, data from the CDC indicated that in 2021, nearly 3,600 children aged 18 and under died in gun-related incidents, meaning that for the first time, deaths of children by gun violence surpassed deaths due to traffic accidents, which was the previous leading cause of death among children. And whereas, analysis of the CDC data shows that Black and Indigenous people and people of color or BIPOC individuals are disproportionately impacted by gun violence, with Black children and teens having the highest gun death rate among the nation's population at nearly four times the rate of white people, and Hispanic and Indigenous people dying by gun violence at twice the rate of white people. And whereas, CDC data and hospital admission and discharge data show that Minnesota has on average 497 gun deaths and 811 non-fatal gun injuries every year, including 128 homicides and 319 injuries due to criminal acts. And whereas, Roseville experiences gun violence, including the April 25, 2022 incident on West Lake Owasso Boulevard, in which an individual recklessly fired at surrounding homes and cars, and eventually shot and wounded Roseville Police Officer Ryan Duxbury, who I should say has recovered tremendously from that, and has had a lot of support from the community.
Yes.
And whereas, Roseville and cities across the nation are working to end senseless, senseless violence with evidence-based solutions, including integration of social services and mental health support into public safety work, holding a free gun turn-in event in 2022 for community members to dispose of unwanted guns, and providing gun locks free of charge to allow residents to better secure their guns and their homes. And whereas, protecting public safety in the community is one of the city's highest responsibilities. And whereas, upholding the Second Amendment rights can and should go hand in hand with promoting safe and responsible gun ownership and use, including limiting gun access for persons with dangerous histories. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Roseville renews its commitment to end gun violence and pledge to do all it can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to keep our community safe. And be it further resolved that the city declares the month of June 2023 to be National Gun Violence Awareness Month and encourages all citizens to support efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved by Councilmember Strong, seconded by Councilmember Groff. Discussion on the motion, Councilmember Strong.
Thank you.
Councilmember Groff?
I just want to thank the people, the woman who came and spoke, because you bring up some really important, important points about education. And this is just a start. I mean, this is a, a small thing, I, in my opinion, the city council can do, but it's something we can all build on. And so thank you for coming.
All right. Other discussion on the motion, Councilmember Schroeder?
I actually want to thank the council before I got here, because I went back and looked, and there was a lot of work and discussion on this from everyone, actually. And I appreciate that there was taken serious and that it was, the effort put into it to coming to this, what we have today. So appreciate that.
Other discussion, Councilmember Eddon?
I would second that. I appreciate your work and the work of Councilmember Strong initially to spearhead this. And I know that I, I did not support it before, and it kind of landed on our desk, and I think it was connected as to what we were doing. And I appreciate that you've rounded that and brought in what we're doing, and then maybe point to further steps that we can do, as was brought up by Ms. Chisholm. So, thank you.
And I would, I would add thanks. I couldn't do this without noting that both City Manager Trudgen, as well as, I think, public safety staff had a lot to do with putting together a lot of statistics and information and relating it to Roseville. So I think that's an important part of it here. And I also just want to acknowledge that, especially as you look at the numbers, the, the numbers of deaths and injuries are significantly higher than the numbers of homicide and crime-related injuries. And a big part of that was brought up by our speaker this evening, which is the suicide issue. And I think that that's something that perhaps in our next draft- And I think that that's something that perhaps in our next draft next year, we will try to find a way to add to the discussion here, because I think that is, as was noted and echoed by councilmembers, a very significant part of the issue of gun violence in our community. And so do want to acknowledge that and appreciate that insight. Councilmember Strong.
I just, I thank you, Mr. Hutter, for bringing forward your comment, too. I think that gives us homework for next year, next May, before they're out of school, to maybe bring the students of the high school in, and how this resolution is a start in that education process and what we can do to help. And I'm still thankful the students feel safe within the school, but we want people to feel safe outside of the school as well, and I think that's been our mission in so many things that we've done as a whole. And I credit all of us for some of the amazing things that we've done to get past and added different roles and things, to find safety. That's not just a police officer, but a holistic public safety. And so I really, I think that can be our starting point for where we build and grow. So thank you, and thank you for being here, all of you, and speaking.
All right, with that, we've got the motion to approve the proclamation before us. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. The proclamation is approved. And I will note for next year, we will add a clause about the day as well, and we'll make sure it's on our calendar to adopt before the month of June. So we'll be much more on the ball next time. All right, with that, then, that brings us to consideration of city council minutes. We have the minutes of our June 5th council meeting. Draft was presented to the council for this meeting. Are there any changes or corrections that councilmembers have noted, or a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, a motion to, I'm assuming, approve as presented from Councilmember Schroeder, seconded by Councilmember Graff. Discussion on the motion. Do we need any abstentions this evening, or just checking, June 5th?
I was.
Yeah, I need to abstain.
Okay, just, I should have just snuck it through without you.
For graduation.
Yeah, but I know councilmembers love to abstain when they're not at the meetings. So with that, we've got the motion to approve those meetings minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That seems to have passed unanimously. All right, we have the minutes. All right, that brings us then to our consent agenda items, 10A through M. Nothing was removed. I'll turn it over to Mr. Trudgen for his introduction of those items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a lengthy one, so bear with me. Item 10A approves payments in the amount of $833,872.27. Item 10B approves one temporary gambling permit for the Roseville American Legion Auxiliary for a raffle on July 4th. Item 10C approves the expenditure, an expenditure to replace the compressor for the dehumidification system which failed at the Roseville Ice Arena. Item 10D approves entering into a professional services agreement with Davey Resource Group for tree inventory for the city's public trees. Item 10E approves a resolution awarding a contract to New Look Contracting in the amount of $809,847 for pathway projects on Cleveland Avenue, Lexington Avenue, and Marion Street. Agenda item 10F approves entering into a grant agreement with Metropolitan Council to receive $158,000 for capital improvement projects to reduce the amount of inflow and infiltration to the public infrastructure, or in the public infrastructure. Agenda 10G approves entering into a lease amendment to continue using 2277 Highway 36 for city storage. The lease amendment extends the time for the use of the building for city storage through 2026, with a renewal option for another two years. Once the new maintenance facility is constructed, we will no longer need to store city equipment off-site. Item 10H approves entering into professional services agreement with E.J. Rutt &amp; Sons for on-call land survey and construction staking services. Item 10I approves resolution approving MINDOT signal maintenance agreement for a battery backup system for traffic signals on Snelling Avenue at Lydia and County Road C2. The city will be responsible for the installation and annual maintenance of the signal battery backup system, and this is real important for safety if there's a power outage. That's a very busy road, and you want to make sure that we can have the signals operating when power is out. Item 10J approves a final payment to HydroClean for the work on the 2022 sanitary sewer lining project. Item 10K approves entering into a professional services agreement with AET for materials testing for the city's 2023 construction projects. And item 10L approves entering into an easement agreement with property owners at 1806 and 1812 Aglin Street to address historic drainage issues as part of the 2023 drainage improvement projects. A new storm sewer pipe will be placed in the new easements to address the ongoing drainage issues. And finally, item 10M declares a one midterm vacancy in the Public Works Environment and Transportation Commission and sets the calendar for the midterm commission recruitment and appointment process to fill the vacancy. Just as a reminder, the city council will review the interested candidates for that vacancy on Thursday, August 24th. And that is the consent agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trudgen. Is there a motion related to the consent items this evening?
Motion to approve consent agenda, consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Right, it's been moved by Councilmember Strong, seconded by Councilmember Ratten to approve those items or receive those items if there are reports. All those in favor signify by saying, oh, I forgot to ask, is there any discussion from anyone on the council? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Those items are approved or received. That brings us to the future agenda review, and Mr. Trudgen is on the ball and ready to go with that. I'll turn it over to Mr. Trudgen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a reminder, next Monday is Rosefest Parade, so there will be no council meeting. Our next meeting after that is July 10th. We will have Public Works Environment and Transportation Commission members come forward and have a joint meeting. I know, I think they're meeting soon, maybe, soon, but they will be, a couple of things will be being forward, whether it be compostable containers and speed limit. They've been talking about that and want to get conversation going with the city council. We have some preliminary plaques to approve, one at 691 and 711 Schreier, and then also one at 2560 Frye Street. We also have a conditional use, as well as zoning tax amendment for the Ramsey County Environmental Service at 1725 Kent Street. And what I would like to do, and this is the next page we'll get to in a second, is we have a lengthy list of long-term initiatives that I introduce, thank you to the mayor for helping with the format on that, that I want to at least have a specific conversation and look at that and kind of go through some of those items and see if what's still relevant, what we want to make sure we talk about, and maybe try to put some timelines on that. So that would be the idea with that particular case. Our following meeting after that is July 17th. We first have an EDA meeting, where we'll talk about the preliminary 2024 EDA budget and then receive an update on the status of the various districts that we have in the community. And then as part of the work session, we actually have a pretty busy agenda. We do a Visit Roseville Wayfinding Sonage presentation by Visit Roseville and their consultant. We also want to present the capital improvement plan, talk about the SAC credit, the Sewer Access Charge Credit Policy Discussion. Tubman has approached us looking for some potential financial assistance. They work closely with the prosecuting attorney and the police department regarding domestic violence issues, and it's something that we have a long partnership, but not a direct financial partnership, so we do want to introduce that conversation. And discussion about the circulator bus with New Tracks, that's something that some of the councilmembers may recall did a few years ago. They are in the cusp of perhaps receiving some significant grant dollars, and they want to come to us and talk to us about maybe restarting that, although I did hear that that date might not work out for them, so it may come later. But that's just to set that up a little bit as far as conversation. So that is the next couple of meetings, and then as a regular basis, I will include this items. As I said, we'll talk about this at our next council meetings, and we can, especially the ones at the top there that are the TBD, we can talk a little bit more about those, how you want those shaped. Other things are things, whether it's brought by the council, or we know we have to come forward and talk about like the cannabis regulations, the sacred communities legislation or changes that we need to do. So those are things we just want to tip off that they'll be coming at some point, but certainly this is a place where council member-initiated items can be listed. So I won't spend too much time on that over here tonight, but certainly happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trudgen. Are there questions for Mr. Trudgen on the future agenda? Or any councilmember announcements, communications, reports, or future agenda items to be requested? Councilmember Strong.
First, thank you for including the future agenda in our packet. That was very helpful to be able to review instead of just very quickly at the end. So I appreciated that. Thank you to all who, the city staff especially, for making Juneteenth celebration a very wonderful success. I offered to stock napkins, and I served about 300 meals. So again, be careful what you wish for, but it was a really great day, and the feedback at the food, where everyone is excited, was really, really nice. People just were incredulous and really appreciative of the opportunity to have free meal and share that time together. So, and I got a chance to talk with the ice cream folks as well, and it was just a lot of appreciation for the opportunity. So I really, I hope it's something, even compared to last year, it was a big growth. And I see, I talked to the woman from Urban League for a long time, and they have so many ideas for partnerships to move Roseville forward, and really excited about what can come from that, so. And I met, our Metro Cities is just also in that same position, and as they share what they have learned and how they want to recommend things moving forward based on this last historic legislative session, I will share that. Thank you.
Other council reports, announcements, communications, or future agenda items? Councilmember Graff.
I'll just piggyback on the Juneteenth success. I helped with the Northeast Youth and Family Services Table, since I serve on the board there, and it was really great response from the people coming by there, and I was pleasantly surprised that so many of them were interested in finding out about it. I was a little shocked that so few people did know what it was and what was available. So we've got some work to be done on that, and in the future, Angie DeMello will be providing two or three items that have been brought up that month, so that we'll have a consistent report for you on that, rather than me just trying to recall what happened in the meeting.
It's always good to develop a system.
Yeah, and she's very good at this. The system thing is good, working well.
Right. All right, any other council communications, announcements, reports? The only thing left on our agenda is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Removed by Councilmember Strong, seconded by Councilmember Ratten to adjourn. No discussion on the motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We are adjourned at 8:01. Thank you.